Call order, meeting for the Normal Town Council for July 1st, 2024. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kous, Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Byers. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We have three public commenters tonight, all to speak on item eight, the changes to our human relations code. First speaker would be Dave Bentley, if you want to come forward. Probably the center one, looks like the mic is on. Our comment rules are simple, it just states your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
All right, thank you, Mayor. My name is Dave Bentley, I live at 403 Carriage Hills Road in Normal. The Prairie Pride Coalition, Bloomington, Normal, and McLean County's LGBTQIA+ community organization asks for your support of the proposed changes to the town's human relations code that would add gender identity as a protected class and modernize definitions of sexual orientation and race to make the town's code consistent with state law and with human relations codes in other Illinois municipalities. Almost 23 years ago, then-Major Kent Carricker, and I believe President Mayor Kous was on that council as well, amended the human relations code to include sexual orientation as a protected class, thus barring discrimination in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations. This was a bold and forward-thinking act, as the state had not yet added these protections to its own human rights code. We applauded the actions of the city manager and the town leaders in helping make this community a safer, more equitable environment for the LGBTQIA+ community. Tonight, you have the opportunity to further strengthen the human relations code by adding gender identity to the list of protected classes. This is a timely action, as equality for members of the transgender and non-binary communities has been threatened by the introduction of hundreds of bills around the country that would strip a variety of protections from transgender and non-binary people, particularly in the areas of gender-affirming healthcare. Members of the Prairie Pride Coalition and Equality Illinois, our partner statewide LGBTQ+ organization, submitted proposed changes to the Normal Human Relations Commission earlier this year, and those members unanimously endorsed our suggestions. We appreciate their support, as well as the town staff's recommendation that these changes be adopted this evening. Many of us have established our lives here in Bloomington, Normal, and we want to feel as if we enjoy the same rights and protections as other minority communities. The changes you vote on tonight will help make the town a more welcoming and equitable environment for all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carla Bailey Smith.
Hi, my name is Carla Bailey Smith, and I'm here today representing the ACLU Steering Committee of Central Illinois as the president. The ACLU works to ensure that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people can live openly without discrimination and enjoy equal rights, personal autonomy, and freedom of expression and association. The ACLU's advocacy is also legendary in support of racial justice. The Central Illinois Steering Committee serves as a watchdog for the ACLU. We monitor public boards and commissions, including the town of Normal. We review agendas and respond accordingly when a subject or proposal could impact civil liberties. Over 100 bills attacking transgender people have been introduced into state legislatures since 2020. Passing the proposed updated language to the Human Relations Code, or Human Rights Ordinance, will signal to families and individuals currently living here and those seeking a new and safer place to live, that the town of Normal welcomes and supports them. Our Central Illinois ACLU Steering Committee also takes calls and inquiries from people when they experience discrimination, and we would be happy to inform them of the complaint process with the town of Normal and grateful for the inclusion of the updated language for sexual orientation, gender identity, and race. I hope you will vote to update this language as proposed. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Megan Hopper.
Good evening, my name is Megan Hopper, and I am here tonight representing PFLAG Bloomington, Normal, as the current president of the organization, but also a parent of young children who are also part of the LGBTQIA+ rainbow. I'm in support of line item eight to amend the town of Normal's human relations code. On behalf of PFLAG Bloomington, Normal, our organization would like to encourage the town council to accept these important amendments. Our world is changing, and these ordinances are also needing to change, because they haven't been updated since 2001. These updates are going to help to accommodate and protect many members of our community, and a lot has changed in the last 23 years, including gender identity being one of them. In this day and age, and it's time for this also to be added as a protected class. As a parent of transgender children myself, this is an important update that can make our community even stronger than it already is in support of LGBTQIA+ individuals, not only for the current, but also future members that might be considering coming to our community. A change and an update to these definitions will also ensure protection and rights for many that are falling under the LGBTQIA+ community. I'm here to stand in support of this amendment, not only for those in the community that will be affected by this change, but also for my young adult children. Thank you for your time tonight.
We move to the omnibus agenda items considered routine and will be taken with a single vote, unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Ms. Harrison, then Ms. Lorenz.
I'm just needing to ask to be excused for any bills that I incurred.
Okay, I would like to pull item F, as in Frank.
Motion for approval, please.
So moved.
Second.
Items considered under omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 17th, 2024, a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment as of June 26th, 2024, a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to Pro Vantage Systems for the circular basketball courts resurfacing project in the amount of $26,374, resolution to accept bids and award a contract to Row Construction for the Constitution Trail repaving project in the amount of $69,406.67, and a resolution to approve executive session minutes of January 16th, 2024, and of February 19th, 2024, and to retain the confidentiality of those minutes. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye, those items are approved. Item F is an ordinance approving a parking license agreement between the Normal Public Library, Rutherford Suites LLC, and the town of Normal.
Ms. Lorenz. Go move, please.
Second.
Thank you. I bring up this item, first I want to underscore, we do need to make sure that we have quality, accessible parking for our library patrons. I bring it up, however, because I did note, and I'd like some more information, about the increase that we've seen since the initial contract that began in 2018, which was $15,000 a year, and then we did a one-year kind of stopgap that also went up by a double-digit amount. And then, now that we are doing another, I believe, five-year contract, it's programmed to see about a 4% increase every year. So that nets out to be about 16 or so percent over the life of that contract. And what I'm just kind of curious about is if we had any, if we got any information as to why Rutherford is seeing the need to increase, what's going on with that? And, you know, where do we see this trend going?
Well, I will start my response, and then I'll invite Corporation Counsel Chris Agrosa to jump in if he has anything additional to add, since he was involved in the conversations. You did point out, and I wanted to share with the audience, the Normal Public Library, the town, and Rutherford Suites have had a multi-year agreement for the library to use the parking lot that's immediately adjacent to their property off of Fell Avenue. That library, or that parking lot, is owned by Rutherford Suites, and in exchange for the library patrons to use those spaces, the town's role in this agreement is then to allow Rutherford Suites tenants to park in the College Avenue deck. And we've done this for a number of years. In the first five years of the lease agreement, Rutherford Suites kept their lease rate the same. No increase, $15,000 per year for five years. That really is unusual. So we had five years of certainty, and just really appreciated Rutherford Suites and the property owner, their accommodation at such a great rate, really. We were very pleased with that rate. Upon renewal in 2023, then we came to council for a one-year extension. That was all the owner at the time wanted to negotiate. And of course, we're at the, you know, we have to work with the owner to negotiate this, and a year ago, that's all they were willing to negotiate, was one year at a time. And so we went with their updated numbers in 2023. This year, the owner was willing to agree for a longer time, back to a five-year agreement. And I think what we're seeing in this particular agreement is something more typical. It's more typical for a property owner to have some sort of annual increases in their lease arrangements. So staff is not concerned with this, we still think it's a very good deal. The library board considered this at their most recent board meeting, Board of Trustees meeting, and did support the proposed agreement, so we are now presenting it to council for consideration. In terms of specifically what was motivating the owner to go back to a multi-year lease agreement, and their requested 4% increase or the like, I can't say for certain. I'll look to Mr. Chris Agrosa to see if he has anything to add, but I do think that this is more typical of lease arrangements.
Yeah, I don't have any further insight onto the motivations for the price increase beyond it being typical. You know, largely, this is the library driving the bus when it comes to this agreement, and so we try to, you know, accommodate where we can in offering the parking, but when it comes to the amounts paid between the library and Rutherford, you know, they're largely in control of how that gets negotiated out.
Any guess on what is causing, what caused the 20% increase a year ago, and then now 4% each year? I mean, is it upkeep and maintenance? You know, I'm just trying to get at that. What's, you know, we see lots of cost increases, you know, so, just trying to get at that aspect.
Well, again, this is paid by Normal Public Library. I believe a year ago, when we came to council, I think it's because the owner had recognized that he had made a great deal benefiting the public library to have five years of no increase. So, you know, based on probably their expenses incurred, perhaps maintenance, but more likely taxes and fees that might be associated with owning the property, I think that might be generating some of their interest in updating their lease agreement.
Okay. All right. You know, and I really want to underscore that, you know, and I don't think I'm alone in this opinion, that it is really important to ensure that the library patrons have safe and accessible parking. You know, it's always been a challenge at that location, and, you know, we don't, I particularly don't want, I don't think any of us want to put that in any kind of, you know, compromise situation. It's just remains, it continues to be a challenging situation, so probably no good answer on that, but thank you for the explanation.
We're there on this item. Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye, that ordinance is approved. We move to general orders, first the item of which is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-24 operating and capital investment budget.
Book the bill.
Thank you.
Second.
This is an adjustment we do every year, and it's that time, Ms. Reese.
Absolutely, maybe just a few more comments to add. As Mayor indicated, this is our annual presentation to council in a report form, finalizing the previous fiscal year budget, adopting all the budget adjustments that we've made through the year, explaining where we landed with revenue, expenses, townwide, and general fund. I believe Mr. Heans' report is pretty thorough, we did not plan to make any kind of formal presentation, but I think what you'll see is, for various reasons, the budgeted revenue townwide was changed, with some explanations associated with transfers and the like, and then, of course, our budgeted expenditures changed significantly, so we are still ending the fiscal year in a surplus position.
Questions or comments? Ms. Harris.
Yes, since you left it open for comments, I figured I'd say one. But first of all, thank you, and I know we get this every year, but I will say, just from reading this one, can I leave a really good comment? Can we keep going with this format? Because it made it really easy for me to be able to understand what the shifts were and why. So this was one of the best presentations I've seen of this. So I really, I was glad when you said comments, because I wanted to really share that, and it made it helpful to reduce the amount of questions I would have, so thank you, and thank you for putting this together.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye. That ordinance item is approved. Item eight is an ordinance amending the town of Normal human relations code.
Go move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye, that item is approved. We have one item of new business tonight, and that is a motion to approve appointments to the Bloomington, Normal Asayakawa Sister Cities Committee and the Planning Commission.
With approval.
Second.
Questions or comments on this? Go ahead and give us a little background on those.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. In front of us is an appointment to the Planning Commission. Mr. Ben Matthews is a resident of Normal, has a long history of civic engagement in our community. He's employed by the Illinois Education Association, is a member of the Bloomington, Normal Sunrise Rotary. Other community participation includes serving on the boards of Milestones Early Learning Center, being active in Jacobs Well Community Church, and State Farm Holiday Classic Basketball Tournament. He's a graduate of Lincoln Christian College and Illinois State University. Mr. Matthews will fill the unexpired term of former Commissioner Tim McHugh due to Mr. McHugh's resignation and relocation out of the community. We also have, for the Asayakawa Sister Cities Committee, Mr. Eric Stegman is a resident of Normal, and has been very active in the Asayakawa Sister Cities program as a volunteer. He serves as teacher with Unit Five School District, and recently traveled to the Asayakawa as a chaperone for the junior trip. Mr. Stegman is the father of the Sister Cities Committee's next high school ambassador, and is described as "exactly what the committee needs" by Sister Cities Commissioner Jeff Kresh. Mr. Stegman will fill the unexpired term of former committee member Eric Sweetwood due to Mr. Sweetwood's resignation and relocation out of Normal.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye, that item is approved. We have one public commenter at the end of session, Mr. Ron Omar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions for the town. I reported months ago, sidewalks were blocked on Route 51, the underpasses under the railroad with vegetation. I heard that the town couldn't do anything, they were going to contact the state. Well, nothing's been done yet, this is months. The sign that directs you to Amtrak and all is blocked, so people probably drive by the Amtrak, the station, the sign that directs you to Amtrak Station, and this facility is totally blocked by vegetation, I've sent you all pictures. Nothing's been done, and then the cars have to drive around Normal, creating pollution, which you're supposedly all concerned about, but, you know, driving around lost and looking for things. Then the most recent here is that pole behind maybe Garlic Press, actually the couple of businesses just west of the trail that were abandoned because the town of Normal thought there'd be, you know, the east and west developments on the circle, Constitution Trail east and west. Ameren, five, 10 years ago, put a new pole in. They cut off the old pole at the communication utility wire level. That pole had started leaning, it's been leaning for five, 10, 15 years. Now it's cracked at the base, it's leaning badly. There's a few little pieces of yellow tape and all. It could kick out, it could fall on a building, it could fall on someone. Do you have anyone, this reminds me of not being able to get the streetlights on Landmark fixed for 10 years. Do you have anyone who talks to the utilities? I mean, you give them a right of way to operate on your property, don't you? On easements and stuff? And nobody seems to care what they do or don't do, or if they do leave dangerous situations for the residents of the town of Normal. I sent you all a picture, I don't think it got to the mayor, because there was an error in the address. But anyway, of that pole, that pole should have been removed five, six, eight years ago. I don't know who's responsible. Does anybody know who's responsible for any gas lines, poles, wires in the town of Normal? It's up to you folks, you give them permission to operate here, you give them rights away. You don't do anything to protect the citizens, I'd be very embarrassed if I were any of your council members, and certain people in certain departments, but I don't know who bears that responsibility. As usual, when I go home, nobody will call me, nobody will send me an email, no one will send me a text. No, we never get any feedback after we talk up here. But I always thought public safety was your number-one goal or rule of government, and it's obvious that is way down on your list. All the fancy schmancy stuff is way high on the list. Do you collect utility fees? Do you collect...
Mr. Omar, you've significantly exceeded your time.
Okay, excuse me, all right. And then just one other thing no one pays attention to, which is relatively minor. This is about the third consecutive year that Cadence Academy hasn't put the flowers up. When you got Horn Swaddled into allowing them not to have any landscape by the street, you said they'd have to have flowers there, but no. Does anybody just watch anything that you pass or repeats with time?
Mr. Omar, would you wrap it up, please?
Okay. I'd like to have an employee contact me, thank you. Or the mayor.
We're taking a motion for adjournment, are there comments? Ms. Smith.
Two, one's a housekeeping item. I received the notice, which I'm sure went out to all residents, about the truncated garbage collection because of the holiday on Thursday. But I also, on my route with the dog walk, noticed that somebody had put a TV at the curb, which will not be picked up. But Electronic Recycling Self-Service is this Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the Public Works location on 1301 Wernher Street in Normal, and you can get to that going down Adelaide. But more importantly, the Veterans Corner column in today's Panograph had several pieces outlining some expanded services to veterans that have come about making more of them eligible for VA health services. In particular, there are more women participating because of the PAC Act, and I encourage anyone who knows a veteran to have them look at that column, it was in today's Panograph. And it's especially important that we think about this as we celebrate July 4th and honor the people who make our independence possible. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz.
Thank you, I just want to pay a compliment to Parks and Rec. It is Parks and Rec Month, I believe, right, so happy to that. But also specifically, and I did tell Mr. Dammery this, because I happened to see him recently, my husband and I were at the park adjacent to the new Route 66 Normal sign. We were in error, thinking that the Corvette Gold Parade was going to go past there, but it didn't. Instead, we got to enjoy the recently planted landscaping and just a really nice, clean atmosphere of the park shelter there, and I was just very impressed with the whole scene, so kudos to your folks there.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Kous.
Aye, we are adjourned. Aye, we are adjourned.